I'd like to welcome all of you here. I'll have a statement to make in just a moment, but I'd like to begin by calling us to order for this council workshop this Thursday, May the 20th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Askew.
Councilmember Cooper had cataract surgery yesterday. Was it yesterday?
Yes, sir.
And he's recovering from that. And Councilman Askew has a mom that is dealing with some significant health issues and he's assisting her. So the cream of the crop of the council's here anyway, so. I shouldn't have said that, it's been recorded, isn't it? No, we really miss those guys and so, but we're glad that all of you guys are here. I have a statement I'd like to share. We'd like to welcome you to what is a bit of a unique council workshop. Earlier this year, the City Council received a brief presentation on the downtown historic district survey, and after hearing it, the council asked for more detailed information and a more detailed presentation. And so we're here today to hear more details, but we realize it was important that we also invite several of our citizens advisory committees and boards that have a role on the historic preservation of our city. Some of you are serving a boards and you may hear variances or approved grants on historic structures. Others may review zoning codes. Others will encourage historic preservation as a part of economic development. And those on the historic preservation board will have this as their primary focus. Our goal today is that you will learn things that will help you to do your jobs on those advisory committees. And on behalf of all of us on the City Council, we appreciate your time today. I know some of you have taken time off from work to be here today. And you know, the most valuable thing that all of us have is our time because you're giving a very significant slice of your life when you do that, and we're very grateful. Now, because this is the first time that we've had a joint workshop with so many of our advisory committees and boards, we want to also take the opportunity to spend just a few minutes updating you on some of the other things that are happening in our city. As members of our advisory boards and committees, you are advocates in our community, and we want to improve our communication with you so that you can help us in our ongoing efforts to improve our communication with all of our citizens. In the past year, we have invested resources to improve our communications with our citizens through such things as a more robust social media presence, improved partnerships for, with our area news media, timely website updates, and even a new quarterly community newsletter. We will continue to provide additional information to all of you on your committees by ensuring you are on our distribution list for news releases and sharing our community newsletter with you. Additionally, we also may occasionally send a department director to your meetings to update you on things that are happening. We hope that you will find this improved and enhanced communication valuable and helpful in your role on the committees and as you serve as community ambassadors. As this, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our staff to provide some updates on our water, our trails, and our economic development efforts. And we will start with the gifted Marjorie Craig, our environmental utilities director, and she will share with us a water update.
Hi, good afternoon. It's nice to meet y'all. As the council knows, I'm fairly new, and one way not to meet a lot of people is to come during COVID, a pandemic. So I'm still meeting people out in the community and getting to know even the people in City Hall as well. So is the, let's see if the... So when I got here, which was last May, and I knew about the water coloration issue, the resin issue, when I got here, and they had done quite a bit of work already. This is just an update on everything that we've done. And as I've, as I've said several times before, engineers, which is what I am, are not as good about communicating what we've done. So we've really worked to try to do a better job. So what happened? The polishing filters at water treatment plant number four failed. They failed in 2016, and they were welded, and then they failed again in 2017, and it was determined that we needed to replace those filters. Those polishing filters are very complex, they're specialized, and they took time. They took time to design, to fabricate, and to install. And the fabrication, the old filters were aluminum, and the new ones are stainless steel. So this is a picture of part of the failure of the filters, and you can also see that on our special website, which I'll mention later. This is the new polishing filters being installed. And they're, they were operational in December of 2019. So all finished water in water treatment plant four coming out of the plant is not only filters, we have added a device called a turbidometer to measure the turbidity or any stuff in the water coming out of that plant. And so it's gotta be below a certain level, and it's always measured now. And I guess in the past, it was not measured like that. So we're doing double duty to make sure that we're monitoring it better. Are we done yet? No. We can't claim victory yet because we know there is still some resin out in the system. But most of them, most of it has been removed, and we will continue to clean until the pipes, all the pipes are clean. What have we done? We've used three different methods to clean the pipes. Ice picking, line swapping, swabbing, and unidirectional flushing. We've also additionally, when US Water was brought in in 2017 to, to look at the issue, did some flushing throughout the system as well. But the ice picking, and the line swabbing, and the unidirectional flushing have all been done in the last 18 months to two years. So this is a map. You can't see it that well, but what you, but hopefully you can see that the lines here are purple, and these lines are green, and then there are blue, you probably can't see the blue dots. So all of the, the grid area has been unidirectionally flushed in a very systematic way, flushing the material out of the system, and the, actually, the US Water did a lot of that as well. This, the green is the line swabbing. Do I have that right, Cameron? I'm looking at, okay. And the purple is the, the ice picking. So the ice picking is good for short runs, the line swabbing is better for longer runs, but you have to do a precautionary boil water notice and putting customers out of service for two days. So it's just precautionary, but you have to do it. What are we doing next? We are proposing to do an additional 27 miles of ice picking. In some of these areas, we've already ice pigged, but we're going to continue on. We continue with maintenance flushing. Somebody calls and says they're having a watercolor issue, we go out and we flush several hydrants in that, in a row. We also want to hire a temporary flushing crew to just systematically continue the unidirectional flushing through the system. That will help. And then evaluate additional line swabbing. How do we determine where we're gonna go? We can't fix it if we don't know about it. So it's really, really important that our customers call us and contact us and let us know if they have a problem. This is a graph of the customer contacts. So you can see at a high of like 60, 2020. And then now, we, we see a few blips usually, it's still less than 10, like five. One, zero, five. And we have 27,000 connections or water accounts. And so we believe that the resin ultimately affected about 12,500. And so these areas, we definitely target for future efforts. So I mentioned public outreach, and that we haven't done a good job telling people what we've done. This year, we've, we spent quite a bit of time trying to do a lot better job. We enhanced our phone system, so now we can do reverse 911 calls, texts, and emails based on our customer database, not just the 911 database. It's really, really important that all of our customers make sure that their information or their contact information and their methods of contact are up to date. We have a dedicated website called arcommunitywater.com. So on that website, you can see the pictures of our, of the failed filters and the timeline and all of the efforts that we have taken to clean the water pipes. We have had an enhanced, much improved effort of social media, making sure that if we have information, that we put it out there. We're always working on that. We put out signs now if we're doing some maintenance flushing. People, if we're in their neighborhood, people's neighborhood, we want them to know what we're doing. So we want to hear from you if we're not, if we still have things that you think we need to improve. We have a new phone application that was put into place last fall. It's called St. Cloud Connect. Oops. So it sort of looks like this, except for it has the new logo, so I, and I provide, we all provide status updates. So if you want to, we want to hear from you, just like I mentioned, all of our customers. That's our customer service number. There's the phone application, but also if you go to our website, stcloud.org, and you go to St. Cloud Utilities Customer Service, there's a hot link there. If you click the hot link, it goes to a page like, that looks like this. And at the bottom, there's a little button here that says request. And you can't see it very well in this presentation, but I'm just sort of showing it so you go, oh, have some familiarity if you go there and look. So this is the, of course, you can't read that too well, but the, the hot link is right here at the bottom. Try to get it moved up. We're gonna try to get it moved up. I think that would be easier for people to find. And with that, I'm done.
Does anyone in the council have any questions? We certainly appreciate all the work, your leadership and all the work that your department's done. Most people have no idea, all of the hours and the time and the work that's been put into making sure we provide our residents with quality water and clean up the issues that we have certainly had to deal with. Any other comments?
Yeah. And I just want to concur those sentiments. And is it possible to have that map kind of outlined with the location of where some of these issues are, if it's kind of repeating in some of the same areas? Or if you do flushing in an area, then it just kind of pushes it down the line? If, you know, then you get a, a comment from someone further down the line and you're, you know, kind of chasing your tail around. I just didn't know if we have location-based mapping on that.
So if you, we do have, they are, I think they're geocoded with, with all the work that we've done. So if you, if you're talking about like a hot map, if you have multiple, I mean, I've looked at heat maps, they're very difficult to show in a presentation with this, this particular screen. So we do look at that. We look at the number of complaints, or the, the other thing is, we've noticed a little increase if we're doing maintenance, like flushing maintenance, then that's when we'll start to see a couple of people, more calls.
Because the, the velocity in the line normally doesn't kick up any, anything if it's kind of settled in the pipe, right? And then when you do the flushing, it, it kicks up debris?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is very, I just call it sneaky because it's, it's, it's settled, it's made to settle. It settles down to the bottom of the pipe. And so it may or may not go into, it may go in one house and not another. It may not go into a house at all, it may stay in the line. You may see it when the hydrant is flushed only. You may see, you may see red or a light brown, that's some of the fines, that's iron in the filter. You may see, and you might not see it at all, ever. But when you flush, yes, the increased velocities will tend to suspend it, whether you're flushing for maintenance flushing or, or anything.
And I do see some, some of the social media posts, whenever you guys are doing flushing in an area, or there's a line break and you have boil water notice. Do you guys put yard signs out, kind of in some of those areas to, further out to where people can see it when they're, when they're driving in, that you guys are doing flushing? And just kind of explain some of that?
We, we did have a suggestion that came from the public about putting a sign out, and so they've been told to put signs that are a little ahead or behind where they're working to do the flushing.
Okay. Like in the front of the neighborhood kind of thing, if it's gonna be in, in some of the neighborhoods?
Don't know if it's in front of the neighborhood, but it's just by where they're doing the flushing. So we can, we can look at that. Again, we're open to suggestion. We're usually the silent, you know, if water's coming out and it's, we're, we're good. We want to make sure it's all clean and...
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because it might, if you're doing flushing somewhere, it might kick up the issue somewhere else in that neighborhood or kind of in that general range, and they might not know what's, what's going on.
That's true. It's a good point. Very good point.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Trace. At this time, we have an update from our Parks and Recreation Manager Director, Stephanie Holcamp.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. So just want to give you a brief update. Last night, we had a public workshop at the Marina Banca Hall for an hour and a half to talk about two different concepts for the trail connection from Lake Front to Chisholm. We had about 50 residents show up that attended. We had some great conversation with our residents. I've just briefly, I don't have all the comments with me, but some of the ones that I heard repeatedly last night. They're concerned, they're very concerned about the speeding and the increase of accidents along Rumel Road. They would like a barrier up between the road and the trail for safety reasons. They requested that we put speed humps to slow the traffic. So one, our one resident asked if we could put a pedestrian bridge over Rumel Road, and I'll explain that when I talk about the, the two different options. And most, overall, in general, most of, most of the residents that were there were in support of the trail, specifically option B, and I'll, when I talk about that, I'll explain why. So sorry, the, the map on here is not very good. That's why I printed out maps for you, and they're probably easier to see. So option A illustrates the route would be on the south side of Rumel Road. That crosses just, crosses to the north side of the road, right there at Lake Runnymede Park. This would bring the trail on the outside of the curve. So some of the residents were concerned with cars traveling fast down Rumel, not making the turn, and could possibly run off the road and hit a resident. Option B is, is the same. The trail is on the south side of the road, but instead of crossing at the park there, Lake Runnymede Park, it would go on the inside of the curve and cross over just west of the Equestrian Center. Option B was favored, was the most favorable option for safety reasons between option A and option B. We'll have an update. The plan will also be given a presentation to the Recreation Advisory Committee at the June meeting, and then sometime bring the plan back to the City Council either in July There's an update actually to this. So yesterday, Osceola Engineering provided me with a final proposal for the construction permitting landscape irrigation plans, the electrical plans for the trail lighting, and then also the flashing pedestrian signs, some project observation or not management, but overview of the project, and then post-design services. So that proposal was submitted to procurement yesterday, and a task authorization was requested. So hopefully, by the second meeting in June, you'll see that on the council agenda to move forward with that.
Are you ready for some questions?
Do you have more for us?
Nope, that's it, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thanks. I have a question back on the Rumel Road trail, or comments, or, yeah. What is the, what is the orange highlighting that's on the edge? Is that rideaway impacts, or?
Drainage swell.
Drainage swell. I agree with the option B. I would want it further away from the curve, even more if it's possible, just because it's not that far.
Yeah.
You know, if you're coming around a blind curve, you're not gonna see anybody if it could move further away. But I was wondering, how does this align with the, you know, connection from here all the way down to Narcoosi Road? Is there, is the county planning on doing the remaining portion? Do you know if they have any kind of schedule, or just? It seems like the sidewalk is mostly on maybe the south side, once you get past.
Yeah, so it's like Turtle Creek and that new development.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah, Turtle Creek has a sidewalk in my mind, I feel like they do. And then all those new, the 10 or 12 homes that went in, I feel like their sidewalk. I'm just wondering to look, you know, further to the east to see if there's a way to make this have like a logical connection down to Narcoosi and then their trail system and not leave a gap.
800 feet between the end of that sidewalk and the end of this parking lot.
And it's on which side of the road?
It's on the south side.
So I'm wondering if you run the trail completely on the south side and just cross it at the park, and then extend another 800 feet? And I would just not want to leave a gap, if there was a possibility.
Sure.
That was it for me.
Councilmember Trace?
So that was, one of my comments is, yeah, connect, connect there, and especially there's that neighborhood, I forget the name of that neighborhood, there's like 20 houses in it, putting a crosswalk across their entrance and, you know, to where they, they can get on the trail as well, instead of having to cross the road or walk through the grass to the west a couple hundred feet. South side, I'm in agreement with connecting to that end. And then what kind of, you know, there's a lot of discussion about speed on, on the road. You know, can we look at the speed limit of the road? I'm sure it'd be a conversation with the county. But then also, any devices we can do for the road to, to slow it down, a chicane or something else kind of in the road where that crosswalk will be?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. I think that's it. Oh, and what was the width of the, the path? I didn't see it mentioned on here.
Eight feet.
Eight feet?
Mm-hmm.
And then how, how much distance between there and the, the edge of pavement?
In some places, it's, it's tighter than others. So I, you know, there was, the idea of putting a barrier between the road and the, and the trail was, was an excellent, you know, recommendation last night, in some spots.
Especially by the bridge. That's, gets really tight.
Well, the bridge was designed with the Jersey Barrier. When that, that culvert was replaced, the bridge was designed with the Jersey Barrier and the trail to be on the south side.
On the other side.
But the county didn't build it at the time because there was no sidewalk to tie into, and, you know, so, but if you, I forwarded the plans to Ms. Holcamp, but it's designed with that.
Perfect. Yeah. That's good.
Thank you for all your work. I certainly agree with the concept B, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, our Economic Development Director, Antranet Forbes, has an update for us also.
Good afternoon. Antranet Forbes, Economic Development Manager, City of St. Cloud. So my intention is to provide you with a snapshot of what economic development has been doing over the past year. I know you all tend to get the quarterly reports, which is really a snippet for the three-month period, but I thought it was important for you all to see kind of what we've been doing through indirect response to COVID-19. So this is almost a year to date since the original St. Cloud COVID-19 Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan was adopted, which was May 14th, 2020 via Resolution 2020-082R. It was established to provide financial and technical assistance to local businesses in order to provide business continuity and transition during recovery. It was designed to supplement and not duplicate the state and federal funding programs which were ever evolving. So under that program, there was originally, I think, 1.25 million, and then it shaved down to half a million, that was for financial and technical assistance. So we developed the small business and nonprofit grants. To date, we have reviewed 148 applications and awarded 72 grants, which totaled $318,975 dispersed. That is job retention of 478 jobs. That does not include any of the county or state money or even federal money that's been dispersed. That's solely St. Cloud, under the OUC Business Retention Fund. And then a few months ago, I think it started in March 1st, if I'm not mistaken, we implemented the CDBG slash CV Business Grant Program. That was because St. Cloud had become entitlement city, and we wanted to see how we can continue to service some of our businesses. Those programs offered a slightly different take in that you were able to receive more funding than the COVID grants. The small business rental assistance, you get up to $20,000, whereas the COVID, it is based on employee, the number of employees, up to 10,000. And the CDBG slash CV, you can have only one employee and still get up to $20,000, depending on the need. To date, we have received 26 applications and recommended for award a little under $60,000. And then the Sidewalk Cafe Furniture Grant, that was a grant that was really to encourage our businesses to increase their capacity by offering outdoor furniture, which included the barricades, the tables and chairs and planters and such, to really create an outdoor experience for folks while practicing social distancing. That offers up to $10,000 per business. We have received three applications, and they are currently going, undergoing the underwriting For technical assistance, because we didn't want to just throw money at the problem, we wanted to make sure we also looked at post-recovery, how are businesses planning to continue through the transition and be more prepared post-COVID. So we partnered with the SBA under our Strategic Alliance Memorandum that says that they are going to be able to provide us with direct resources and information. That included our webinar series. To date, we've had one on exportation, trade, sales, and marketing, that was February the 16th. And yesterday, we had one on marketing 2.0 for small businesses, which featured using social media in order to advertise, which is a low-cost way for businesses to market themselves. And on September 15th, we will be doing a webinar on how to do business with the federal government in partnership with PTAC. We also partnered with UCF Business Incubator Program for the Growth Will 360. That is our technical assistance training program, which offers one-on-one counseling for a six-month period with 10 St. Cloud businesses to help them learn how they can better pivot or restructure their business operations for business continuity. We have partnered with not just UCF, but also Osceola County and City of Kissimmee in order to match the number of funds that are putting in, so that we intend to apply for a federal grant to make it a regional-wide program. And also to reiterate, one of my colleagues who talked about the importance of us getting communication out, because you're only as good as, your programs are only as good as people know about them and able to participate, is being able to communicate with our business community. So we started a special alert process where we were trying to get time, real-time information out to our businesses that included information such as executive orders, if there were new grant opportunities, or any changes in the PPP programming. There were 25 alerts to date that have been issued. We also worked on programs and activities. In fact, just this month, we partnered with Career Source for a summer youth internship program that had a financial literacy element to it. And that was to hire St. Cloud High School juniors and seniors at St. Cloud businesses. As I've said many times before, our workforce is one of the key indicators that site selectors and businesses look at when they want to relocate. St. Cloud has the higher graduate, has a higher graduation rate than both Kissimmee, Osceola, and the state of Florida. So it's important for us to make sure that we highlight that when we're looking, when we're talking to businesses about why they should relocate. And it's also important for youth to get the opportunity to work and have a real investment into our business community, because not all youth are going to be college-ready. Not everyone's gonna go the four-year path, and there's also our future entrepreneurs that may get that bug from working in our local businesses. That program, the St. Cloud and Career Source, will pay for that youth for the six-week period, the full salary including benefits. We also partnered with Addition Financial, who will set up bank accounts for them. That's the financial literacy element. And they'll put $50 in each one of the students' accounts so that they can start saving, because what you don't want to do is give a teenager a check and then tell them to go off and buy a new pair of shoes. So we also implemented the We Open Safely campaign. We partnered with Osceola and City of Kissimmee, and that was right at the peak of when COVID started, and there were a lot of people uncertain about how we were going to continue to move forward, particularly businesses. How do we still practice social distancing but be able to accommodate our customers? And so we did a slew of marketing campaigns that basically was said, let's shop local and let's be safe. We also distributed PPE equipment to local businesses so they can use for their employees as well, give out to masks to customers that walked in, because at that time, masks were kind of a hot commodity. We also realized that the, the mental stress that was caused, not just from an individual level, but tack on being a business owner, was something that we needed to address. And so we partnered with the St. Cloud Chamber to do a four-part self-care series called Strength Not Stress, which was directly geared toward business owners. We also instituted our virtual business walks, where the city partnered with our resource providers, which included but not limited to the Small Business Development Center, the SBA score, the Chamber, Career Source. Career Source, FD, yes, PTAC, FDOT and such, just really speaking one-on-one to businesses to find out how we can assist them better and also let them know what free resources that were available to them. Continuing with our programs' activities, we instituted through the CRA the Special Event Grant, because we recognized that the city should not be solely responsible for conducting events in our in our community. But we want our community to come out and also tell us what events that they wanted and really take the lead in doing them. So that grant was instituted in February, I think, of this year. And our Downtown Assistance or the BTR Reimbursement Grant was instituted December of last year, where we reimburse businesses who are interested in starting a business in St. Cloud for both the city and the county BTR fee. The Bicycle Tour, which started February of two thousand and twenty, and the second one, which was November of two thousand and twenty, was also during COVID, and we had gift card giveaways to our local businesses. In November, which is Shop Small Saturday, we did a video series with seven local businesses, encouraging people to shop not only downtown, but in our St. Cloud businesses overall. And then, to wrap it up, we did business assistance. And what business assistance basically means is we started reaching out, we literally cold-called our businesses and said, hey, we know that this is during COVID, we know that you need help, but we don't know that you know who we are, so how can we help you? And so we reached out to them and we also took in calls that reached out to us. Whether or not we can help them, we can at least direct them on where the resources were that they can get that assistance. So to date, since March of last year, we have done two hundred and fifty-one cases of business assistance. Lastly, I thought it was important to mention, this one particular statistic, because I'm always about the statistics, is that it's important to note that in the five years since since two thousand and fifteen, that St. Cloud's population not only grew, but our job rate grew as well. So from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty, the five zip codes that encompass St. Cloud, that we outpaced the national job growth rate by almost thirteen percent. So we are prospering.
That's it.
Excellent. Councilor Matheny.
Thank you. I was writing down your statistic. Thank you for all your hard work that you do. I have one question that I get asked all the time, what's happening with Sunny's? Is anything going in where Sunny's is? What's what's happening with that? If is any, is there any interest in that building?
I haven't received any interest in that particular building, but that doesn't mean that we're not reaching out to try to find people that are interested in it.
Okay.
So in fact, just today, I attended the Retail Live event in Orlando. That's where national retailers, including franchise restaurants and and other retailers like Target and such, all come together and they tell you exactly how much square footage they're looking for. You need to compete to try to get them to look into your city.
Well, the other question is, is there an easy way or some way, I don't I don't know how to do it, but to kind of notify us of the businesses that are coming into town? Because I seem to find out on Facebook, like everyone's excited that Culvers is coming. I'm like, oh, it is, and then I'll go look, you know. Is there some way to kind of like, and I don't know, just give you bullets of like who's coming in, who's starting construction? I mean, just businesses that are coming in, because I just seem to find out on social media and I never know. So it'd be nice to kind of have a heads up on on those items.
I think our city manager's leaning in.
I think we have a.
I guess he's got an idea down here. There's a light bulb.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we'll look into that. We'll have to figure out at what point we would notify the public and the council, you know, as they go through. And some of them are proprietary, so we'll we'll come up with a system, be able to do that on a regular basis.
Yeah, that would be great, just so you'd kind of announce it and be supportive and, you know, things like that. Like I've I've heard a few businesses in the last week that are trying to come here. I'm like, oh, I had no idea. So it's great. Thank you.
I certainly echo that. That's a great thing that we don't think we celebrate enough is how many, and people don't realize how many small businesses have actually started up. It's quite significant when you look at all the numbers and anything we can do to help promote them and and continue to work with the Chamber. Appreciate all that you've done and I think that's a huge win for the city. That we don't celebrate enough. Thank you for all your effort.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have a presentation and discussion regarding our Historic Preservation District. And I think Ms. Corbett, are you ready? If you'll introduce yourself so we know who you are.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Lee Corbett. I am a Historic Preservation Consultant. And I actually have a relationship with the city going back twenty-one years. I'm the former Florida Main Street Coordinator for the Florida Department of State. And so I was the coordinator when St. Cloud was brought into the Main Street Program twenty-one years ago and participated in the initial Resource Team Visit that we did in town. And then I came back about seven years ago. Paula brought me in with Main Street to do a Historic Preservation Workshop. And then I had the honor this past year to work with a colleague on a Historic Resources Survey funded by the Florida Department of State. And so that is what I'll be giving this presentation on. And is there a hard copy of the survey? I was told there would be one available? Yes, thank you. So this was definitely a different, interesting year to be doing this Historic Preservation Survey, as you can well imagine. But again, it was an honor. I was the lead and my colleague and assistant was Christine Dalton. And she's the former Preservation Planner for the City of Sanford. So she had kind of that regional experience and perspective on running a local Historic Preservation Board. And before I get any further, who here is on the Preservation Board? Oh, excellent, okay. And who here is on the CRA Board? No? Sorry, okay. Sorry, looking the wrong way. And then I think there was a third or fourth boards that were supposed to be present today. Okay, economic develop, and who's on economic development? Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you.
And the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to get a sense of who's here. So Christine did a lot of photography because she's based here in central Florida. I came in and did some, but mainly I'm the lead with the state on how to organize it and put it all together for submission to the Florida Department of State. Our partners in this, of course, were St. Cloud Main Street and the Osceola County Property Appraiser. And they were fantastic to work with. They helped us with our GIS mapping, updating addresses and property parcel numbers for the various properties. So the purpose of this was to survey everything within the boundaries, and we'll get into the boundaries in a little bit, that were built on or before nineteen seventy. So at the time, that was the fifty-year benchmark. And generally, for listing properties on the National Register of Historic Places, you have a fifty-year benchmark. For FEMA and other agencies, it's about forty-five, but for this, we went for fifty. We did at least two hundred and twenty-two historic structures based on what the reports were that we were getting from the property appraiser of the dates of the buildings. And then, as an architectural historian, I would assess the eligibility for listing either individually or as part of a district, the structures that we were recording for the National Register of Historic Places. There are, there are all sorts of preservation laws. There's what's called the Section One-O-Six Process. I'm not going to get into all that, but that's part of the National Historic Preservation Act. And that that gets into any federal funding that's used for projects that are on or eligible. Archaeological structures, what have you, on the National Register. And then you can look up the state laws. But the point being is really the best protection for buildings and in sites, which as most people don't understand, is really your local Historic Preservation Laws and Ordinances. So I applaud you for having a local ordinance and district. You have three structures that are in the National Register of Historic Places individually nominated that were within the survey area, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the GAR Hall, which was nominated years ago. More recently, the St. Cloud Depot. And then, it was fun, during the survey, the National Register Review Board approved. And then it went to the National Park Service to have the Memorial, Veterans Memorial Library and Women's Club approved. So that was, we had to update our report at the end, so that was kind of fun to say that it is actually on the register. St. Cloud Main Street, I I'm pretty much sure that everyone in here knows what Main Street's about. They've been around for twenty-one years and they've really taken the lead on the historic preservation initiatives in St. Cloud. You can see the streetscapes, the the markers, the National Register nominations and the murals. And so that's just visible as you walk around. So I applaud Main Street for accomplishing so much and having such continuity and leadership, which is also refreshing in the Main Street world, so bravo. You have an ordinance that you enacted in two thousand and sixteen. And this just tells you the basics of you've got your Preservation Board, you've got your ordinance, and you have this application process for what's called a Certificate of Appropriateness. And you have the seven members. I just met a new member, so bravo. I will say that on your website, and this was really more than a year and a half, for Historic Preservation, you, the links do not work for the ordinance. They do not work for the map and they don't list the members. So I would suggest making those links work and listing the members in order to make it more user-friendly to the public. And you became a Certified Local Government, which is kudos, because that, I know, has been a goal for Main Street and the city. And, you know, to do that, you have to have certain things in place, which are the ordinance, which are having the board and various other criteria. And the Certified Local Governments are, get some kind of special treatment, if you will, with the state. You don't necessarily have to make a match for certain grants. You get technical assistance training. You might get more visits from staff and perhaps consultants. So kudos on becoming a CLG. And there's a whole network. Andre, you are listed as the current CLG contact. I checked before I came here and there was someone before you, but anyway, Andre is the CLG contact. For those on the CRA, I mean, I don't need to restate your vision and mission, but I did want to highlight kind of some of the crossover between preservation and what y'all do, which are revitalized buildings, rich cultural and historical heritage, historic properties. So you can see that there's an overlap there, and that's common with a lot of Main Street programs in the state of Florida. So one project is Mackasins, some of the remediation that was done in two thousand and nineteen to make it ready for a tenant. And I I believe that there's, there was a tenant, at least when I was here last. So excellent, that's a great way of overlapping the various carrots, if you will, to make Historic Preservation more viable for business owners. So you've got your three CRA districts, obviously, what our project area fell within the downtown CRA. So what were our research objectives? So we assessed and updated the previously documented resources, and I'll get into that. There was a survey done years ago, and so we went back and looked at all those properties that have been previously surveyed. And then we added tons more, because, I mean, the last survey, if it was done in the nineties, it only went through really the forties maybe, so we had, you know, decades that we had to update. And we took notes on the integrity and condition and any bits of historical information that may not have previously been known. So this image is one of the historic Sanborn maps. Are y'all familiar with Sanborn maps? They were historic and fire insurance maps. So that's a great wealth of information to know, the footprint of buildings or what the materials were, the names of the streets and what used to be around and that sort of thing. I went through the whole Florida photographic collection online, which has some wonderful images of St. Cloud. Local newspapers, unfortunately, because of COVID, I believe all the newspapers are packed up because of the library renovation. And then they were at the Osceola County Historical Society and we couldn't access that. But anyway, that's COVID drama, we all get it. Published histories, luckily, because I live in Tallahassee, I was able to go to the State Archives of Florida pre-COVID in the fall. And so I got some information there, which was good to know and use. Platt Maps, the Pokes directories, which are the old city directories, so you know who lived where and what businesses were in what buildings downtown. And they have old pictures and statistics, and they're they're just really rich historical documents to use, if you will. Chamber of Commerce maps, and I just discussed, you know, COVID limitations, dealing with all that. So I mentioned the old survey, yeah, nineteen ninety-three, that's that was a long time ago. So we had a lot of updating to do. So she had written literally seventy pages on the history of St. Cloud. So we went to staff and we're like, I don't think we need to rehash all that history. Is that okay? And they're like, that's okay, just give us a few paragraphs and then give us really mid-century on. So that's what we focused on in our historic context. In the old survey, there were eleven hundred structures documented. She really went citywide. We didn't do that. We did a much smaller area, which you'll see some maps of, which I just discussed. So we had at least a hundred and forty-six previously documented structures that we updated. So we're going to find out what condition they're in, do they still exist, what's going on with these buildings now. So our boundaries mirrored the preservation overlay and the Main Street Program boundaries, right? We thought that would be good for consistency. So that's all the downtown and then some of the periphery residential blocks around downtown. So there are tons of historic resources in St. Cloud that we were not able to survey. So we encourage that you do some other updates in other areas. We just couldn't do it all with this one grant. And as I said, they should be surveyed. So here's here's the district. And I believe this is a CRA district, which is closely aligned, not not quite the same boundaries, but just to show you. So what characteristics does a building need to have or cite to be nominated to the National Register of Historic Places? So they're what called the Seven Aspects of Integrity. So that's integrity of location, design, setting, materials, workmanship feeling and association. So that's that's a lot, and I'm not going to give you examples of every single one, but you get it. It's it's got to have some of the original materials. It's got, it can't be moved. It's got to have some sort of a historical association or be characteristic of a high style or method of construction. All right, so relatively minor alterations, which you frequently see in residential and downtowns, that's okay. Nothing, but if it's major and you really can't recognize the building anymore, then it's not going to be what we call contributing. So we talk about contributing and non-contributing buildings. And then we ultimately, at the end, built a list with all the site file numbers and the addresses and the parcel numbers into what were considered contributing structures and non-contributing structures. So this is an image of what we would call a non-contributing structure. This is an older building. We know this from a previous recordation and various historical records. But you can see that the whole front porch has been enclosed, there's stucco on it, there's vinyl, there are vinyl windows, there are octagonal windows. The crawl space has been closed in. And so this is, hopefully, now that you have your Historic Preservation Board, if someone were to request a permit and want to do all this to their building, this would not be ideal. This would not go through. So here's another interesting structure, isn't it a cute little frame vernacular home, about nineteen twenty-five? And what's happened to it today, it is now part of a car dealership. So we found that a lot of the properties that are on that, remind me, Paula, what is the road, the major road here? Thirteenth Street, yeah. There have been demolitions, obviously, major alterations, as that's become more commercial in nature. So you you wouldn't even really know this is the same building. This building has had some minor alterations, but it's still considered contributing. So it's a craftsman-style home from about nineteen twenty. So some of the tweaks that have been done to it, which are not ideal, but again, they're not deal breakers, are the beadboard cornice has been removed, the decorative rafter tails, the original drop siding is now vinyl siding. So, yeah, things are not perfect. So, yeah, things are not perfect, but they're not deal breakers for being a contributing structure. This would be non-contributing. So up on the far left is the First National Bank Building. And it has morphed through the years. It has doubled, has been completely redesigned. All the materials are different. As you can see up in the far right corner, that was the 1949 alterations, which actually, if that had been frozen in time, would have been considered eligible. But as you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, I believe when it became a library at one point, it just was so altered that that would be considered non-contributing. This is a wonderful example of a building that is contributing and has lots of integrity. So, you know, you can see with these historic photographs, this one has retained its original location, materials, design, you know, feeling, association, all of that. And now it's the Chamber of Commerce. And this building, I believe, benefited from a Division of Historical Resources Special Category Grant at one point, which are grants that go up to $500,000 to restore structures. This is the old Mylar's Money Saving Store. Again, it's had some alterations, that kind of second-story porch has been infilled, the facade on the first floor has been altered, kind of has that old West style that y'all are known for in your downtown with your commercial buildings. It's a two-part commercial. We documented a lot of those in downtown. But, you know, some alterations, but we still considered it a contributing structure. This is the Veterans Memorial, the old Veterans Memorial Building, which I believe is a police satellite station now. Is that correct? And it had some interesting alterations in the 1970s. I found these fun articles where this group came in called Fashion Inc. And they were trying to convince all the property owners in downtown to make it look like a mall, so that y'all could compete with Disney World. Luckily, all of that did not happen. But there are a few alterations associated with that. And they're minor. I mean, you can tell that's the same building. This is an interesting example, because this is one that has had drastic alteration. But the alteration is so old now, the alteration is considered historic. So here you have, let's see, this was the Baptist Church. And you can see on the right, it was this gray rectangular concrete and stone building with memorial windows in 1914. And then in 1925, they're like, yeah, we're not doing that anymore. We're going to go with Mediterranean Revival, because, you know, it's hip, and we like Span of Florida. So that's what we did. So it's still considered contributing. So we'll talk about the evaluation overview and National Register criteria. This is a fun one. This is the old Jacob and Minnie Klotz Home, which, excuse me, was an apartment building. Now it's a single-family home. And it's in the, excuse me, the masonry vernacular style. It's had some alterations, but we have an association with, you know, the owners, as well as, you know, identifying the architectural style. So we ended up with documenting 246 buildings. And we deemed that the vast majority, 183, were considered eligible for listing in the National Register, or I should say, as part of a district. And 63 were identified as non-contributing due to alterations, et cetera. And 20, we decided, were actually eligible for individual listing on the National Register. This is the old Christian church, I believe. So it's had some pretty drastic alterations. I mean, taking out the bell tower, the steeple is not good. You know, covering it in vinyl siding and adding a porch, you know, it's altered beyond recognition. So what are the National Register criteria? So basically, there's A, B, C, and D. A is an association with a particular event, and that's pretty broad. B, a particular person that can have local, state, or national significance. C embodies a, you know, particular style or method of construction, which I basically say is architecture. And then D is essentially archaeology. Okay. So we broke the historical context down into three sections. The early soldier city history, African-Americans in St. Cloud, and St. Cloud from 1940 to 70. So I think most of you know the early history of, you know, being founded by Union veterans. And this is an interesting image I found of when they were laying the cornerstone to the G A R Hall, and they had a parade in town. So we know the history, you know, the plat, it was platted in 1910. And then we updated when the, how the residential makeup changed. But one thing the state said is, like, where are the African-Americans? Like, there is no African-American history. What do you do? So we're going back, and we're like, you know, what do we do? Because we don't have as much information without having all the newspapers on hand that we would usually have. So we looked at some of the population. It was such a small percentage. And then contact with the state actually found this colored quarter, as it was called, that was located, I believe, about a mile east of here? East of here, which I don't believe there's much integrity to it anymore. But we did find out, you know, where this plat was. And that's where African-Americans were located when, you know, at the, pretty much at the founding of the community. So then we talk about the vast growth in the 19, you know, mid-20th century. And you get lots of veterans. They continue to keep coming to the area. And then you have Disney World open, and then you have 13th Street expanded. And again, the impact that that creates on the historic properties that align it. So we jazz that up, if you will, with some properties that are associated with mid-century. So that would be the old post office, which I think is a sports bar now, I think. And then the fun 1965 Brooks Apartments. I think that's such a fun building, and it's just got great character, and it's in great condition. Mid-century modern, that's in vogue now. And then we have these kind of industrial vernacular buildings, which maybe people don't take as much notice of, that were erected by the American Legion. And these old Quonset huts, they're just kind of interesting. I wonder where they came from. But clearly moved here to this block where Poffenbaugh Ford was located. And then we included lots of ranch-style homes and minimal traditional-style homes from the 40s and 50s and the peripheral of downtown. And then, this is hard for y'all to see, but there are 17 structures. All these little green dots are the structures that were demolished since the last survey in 1993. So you can see a lot of them are up there on, near 13th Street. So y'all lost the old ice plant. And then this craftsman-style Robert Ellis House, and this fun framed vernacular eye house that was on Connecticut Avenue. And I noticed that some of the demolitions were on corner parcels. So what kind of resources were we identifying? So residential, commercial, and industrial, religious, and social recreational properties. And the period of significance was from when St. Cloud was initially established to 1970. So the kinds of buildings that we, the styles, there's the Bible of historic styles for historic buildings, or, excuse me, homes that we used. So there are various folk forms, eclectic houses, and modern houses. And these are the various architectural forms that fall within these families of styles. And of course, y'all have this wonderful, fun, neat collection of kit houses, like we've never seen anywhere before. And I assume most of y'all are aware of these kit homes that these early veterans were constructing. You know, you get the railroad that came in, they bring the materials, you order the design. They almost read like shotgun houses, which I usually document in North Florida. But these are actually, they're not shotgun houses. They're these little kit homes. So we really encourage y'all to, I think there's some inventory of them. We were never able to see it. But if they've been identified, to keep trying to identify them and find the original catalogs, so you can use that as a guide, maybe for your historic preservation board, when making design decisions relating to some of these buildings that clearly there's a plan for out there somewhere. And I'd also, with the whole tiny house movement, you know, do a tour, or, you know, bring the tiny house tour, you know, they'll bring in tiny houses. And anyway, it's just fun, but you have such a heritage here that I really think you could build on for preservation and tourism and all of that. And then there's some other more standard, if you will, kit homes. This is the Colonial Revival on Wisconsin Avenue, Dutch Colonial Revival. And that's the catalog for $1,688. There you go. And then we talked about, you know, mid-century, mid-century modern and ranch. Yeah, I don't know. And these are the 20 sites that we identified as individually eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And here they are identified on a map, so you can get an idea of, they're kind of all spread around. And I'll just give you a sampling of them. The old Osceola County Bank, which I understand was City Hall at one time. And it was built in 1911. So what criterion would it fall under? Community planning and development, A, and C, it's just generally commercial style. The old post office, 1909. So whenever you establish a community, what's one of the first things you do? You establish a post office. And y'all are lucky enough to have not just this, but I think three post offices that we identified in the survey. So again, community planning and development, criterion A, and criterion C for commercial. Then you have all this collection of buildings that are associated with Anna Ryan and Isabel Roberts. Do y'all know who they were? So they were the first female, licensed female architectural firm in Orlando. So you have a number of buildings identified with them. Actually, I believe they renovated, like, this is one that they renovated in the Span of Florida style, this kind of Mediterranean Revival style. So that's something I think that y'all can play on as well, too, because we still need more female architects. The Norman Hurst, this is an interesting building. This contractor and merchant, Mallett, is that how y'all, Mallett? Yeah. If you look at the old Sanborn map, you'll actually see he had his little concrete factory, like, in his backyard. It's not there anymore. But he made all these rusticated concrete block that you see all over town. And he built his own home out of it. So that's in association with him, because he was very influential in the early development of St. Cloud. And then you have the Penn Flora Hotel with, you know, association with tourism. That's an event, considered an event. And it's masonry, vernacular, and style. So a lot of these veterans, you know, it's like now, like, they lived in these tiny little homes, and people would come and visit, and where's the family going to stay? Well, this is where they would stay. This is the only example of what I call a resource group. So this would be an example of structures that are all associated with a similar function. So you have an entire block there that has a municipal electric plant. So there were a number of buildings, I don't know off the top of my head, that are associated with the plant itself, including, there's a city electric test building. And so as part of this resource group, again, community planning and development, easily, you know, you've got this new community, you've got to have power, right? And then it's a fun kind of industrial vernacular. It's got some of the Mediterranean Revival, but mainly we just classified it as industrial vernacular. And this just shows you, when we submit it to the state, we do this form that describes the style and where it's located, and anything we know that's special about the structure. But we also submit photographs and maps and assign what's called a Florida Master Site File Number. So the OS means Osceola County, and then it's 1656. So that is the number that's at the state if you were to research it. They could care less if you give them an address, but they really like the site file number, so that you'll see that in the spreadsheets. If it seems mysterious, that's what they are. And so these Sanborn maps, as I mentioned, these early fire insurance maps, show the evolution of St. Cloud, really through, how much power are you giving to people, right? Because I think y'all were bringing in power from Kissimmee at one point. So from 1924 to 1931, it about doubled, and then there were more structures that were added on the site. That building is on the 11 to save list in the past year that is released by the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation. So that's kind of a good PR mechanism to give attention to the building, since at the time, we understood that it was in peril, if you will, for demolition. And then this shows you just, all the green are what we consider contributing structures, and the purple are what we consider non-contributing structures. So again, the vast majority were considered contributing. So this is just a smidge, because we have, we have a whole bunch of recommendations in the survey. And Christine did a great job. She actually went through all the recommendations from 1993. And she gave updates on, like, yeah, y'all did this. This is awesome. You did this, this, and this. You didn't do this, or here's what you maybe could do now, which wasn't necessarily what the state was expecting of us. But she did that on her own. And I would really kind of look at what she did, because, again, she has that perspective of running a local historic preservation board and implementing a local program with the whole COA process. And we also said, maybe you should review the list of properties considered eligible for listing, as outlined in the survey, and versus what you had before. So here are what I call the carrots. You know, you have the stick and the carrot with preservation. Like, you're going to regulate, mm, stick, like, people don't like regulating. But if you're going to regulate, you got to have, like, grants, and, you know, incentives, and things like that. So you have an ad valorem tax exemption. That's really cool. Do y'all, like, is that used very often? Do people know about it? Well, they should. So you ought to do, like, a brochure, have a section on your website, or something like that, to really promote that, because then more people might want to have their properties individually designated even, so that they can be eligible for that ad valorem tax exemption. The CRA has a building and site improvement grant program, which I believe Mackeson's, is that what Mackeson's benefited from? Yes. So I don't know how y'all promote that, but I don't know if you have a particular brochure, but it does seem like maybe that's something that you could promote more as well, because that's definitely a carrot. And then another recommendation is, since y'all are such a new CLG, and then you have COVID thrown in, but, is to really work with staff in getting a report. I'm speaking to the preservation board now, and like, understanding, like, when building permits that are within, you know, the preservation overlay, are they, you know, being sent to the preservation planners for review? What is the typical type of request that's being made? Is it windows? Is it vinyl siding? Is it enclosing crawl space? Like, just to kind of get an overview of, how many are we usually dealing with in a corridor? What are the typical type of requests that we're dealing with? Just to make sure that, you know, you're having a smooth process as it goes along. And then you can maybe tweak your ordinance, and maybe develop guidelines that are based on typical requests that are made. And then, again, just reevaluate the roster, contributing and non, from our report, based on also, like, what you previously deemed historic to create your district, so that they align. So if you could do also a brochure that has treatments that are considered ideal and not ideal. Now, I understand that y'all are using what are called the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation as your guide, which is awesome. That is the, I mean, that's everything from doing work on the White House down to, you know, a local preservation board making decisions. It's what the feds use, it's what the state use, and it's also what local preservation planning board should be using. But illustrate, you know, this is a good example, this is not a good example, and kind of what typically is done well, and what is typically, unfortunately, not done well. And I'd also recommend developing guidelines that are specific to St. Cloud. I believe your guidelines are just the Secretary of Interior Standards. You don't have guidelines that are like, how do we deal with, you know, Mediterranean Revival? We have a lot of Mediterranean Revival here. We have a lot of kit houses. Well, those, you know, are going to be different than, you know, me in Tallahassee with my ranch house, let's say. So it would really be ideal, because you have this neat, neat house, the Dr. William H. Dodd House, which is Mediterranean Revival. And then it's got, you know, vinyl windows. So things like that, like, what would be a typical treatment for windows that are Mediterranean Revival? And especially, we noticed that, let's see, is it in here? Go back one. There's a lot of drive-it that's being used downtown. I don't know if you're familiar with that material, but it's really not ideal for buildings that would have been traditionally stucco or just brick. So this is an So this is an example in Monticello. I've done two surveys in Monticello, and their Historic Preservation Board actually developed guidelines that are specific to Monticello. So this is again, something that I would suggest y'all do. You are a CLG, you're a Main Street, you could get a grant from the state to do this where you, again, you develop the guidelines and you also develop a brochure. So here they have, you know, they have a message from the Historic Design Review Board, and they have examples of, you know, what's typical in Monticello. Well, they have a lot of like Florida Victorian frame vernacular, things like that, more than you do. So it is specialized to what is typical in Monticello. So that's something that I would also recommend that y'all do here in St. Cloud. That's, that's the long and the short. Has everyone had a chance to see a copy of the survey? Do y'all have it loaded on your website where people can pull it up? Okay. It's on a couple, yeah. So I would make this accessible to the public. Monticello, for example, on their Historic Preservation section of their website, they have a link to, to my survey, so anyone can access it.
It would be nice to have it at a link that's easy to find.
Right.
For everyone, the public and ward members, too.
Yeah. Y'all do have a grant in the pipeline through, through Main Street, correct, to do a National Register District nomination, so that's the next step. We made boundary recommendations that are just really tied to where we surveyed. The state may not necessarily agree with those. Just to give you an idea, we just did not have all the time and money in the world to drive around all of St. Cloud and, you know, figure all that out. What would probably could be done is whittled down a bit to mainly the commercial district, maybe with some residential sprinkled in. And then you could create multiple districts ultimately if you wanted to. But you do have that in the pipeline as far as the state, if the governor signs off on the budget. I don't know that he has yet. I'm not quite tuned in as well as I probably should. I think we're in the cool-off period with the state budget. But it's forecasted that this grant will go through, and then a National Register District nomination can come out of that.
Thank you very much. Does anyone in the council like to speak or ask a question? Mr. Trace?
I got a bunch of questions.
Okay.
So in the backup, not in the presentation, there was that 1993 historic survey. There's a lot of great information in there, stuff I didn't, I didn't know about.
And that's why we added it, and again, the state really didn't want us doing that. And we wanted everything and what, like, you just sit down, you have everything right there. It was 70 pages of historic context. People need that, so I'm, I'm glad you read that.
The Wonder City, I didn't realize that was a slogan back in the day. There was actually a seaplane base back in 1939. On the 17 demolished structures, we've got the carrot and the stick kind of thing. I mean, is there any other ways to, to help incentivize other than the ad valorem tax or any grants to?
Well, facade grant, do y'all do, is that through the CRA? Facade grants?
Yes.
And then there are like minimum maintenance ordinance, you know, that can be tied to that. As I recall reading your ordinance, you didn't have a benchmark for hardship for people, so I don't know how that works. So there's a lot of tweaking that probably needs to be done within the ordinance for people to make claims like that. But I would reach out through the Main Street Network, the CLG Network, and say, you know, facade grants, CRA, what CRAs have, the ad valorem. You know, if you, if you got the utilities building on the National Register, then you could possibly have a tax credit project for that, to get a developer and to make it a restaurant or apartments or a venue or what have you. That's another great incentive as well.
Is there any way for, you know, you guys just had a limited area that you guys were looking at. If there's a property owner outside of that limit that knows they have a house from the 20s or 30s to, to be able to go through this process themselves or something to, to help them along that, get them registered, get the tax credit, all that?
Right. So you have your own local program, so you can designate individual buildings locally, and then they would be eligible for the ad valorem. And if they want to do National Register, I mean, you would have to evaluate if it would, you know, eligible for that. But that's something, again, if, if more people knew about these programs, they might be more amenable to getting their individual structure. Because there, there are just a ton of homes we weren't able to, we're just blown away by. I mean, Christine's, she was in Sanford, and she was driving around here, and she's calling me. She's like, I had no idea all this was back here. I mean, y'all are a little hidden, I mean, you already know that. But anyway, she was surprised, and, you know, you have all these homes out there, and they have different associations. And if people could get, you know, a carrot like the, the tax incentive, then they might want them individually designated, which gives the most protection is the local designation.
And this might be Andre's question, I don't know. Like, I thought, I thought we had an issue with the tax credit. So like we?
I don't think it's in place.
Yeah.
So I keep looking down there.
It's in your Code of Ordinances. Yeah, we looked it up. It's not in place?
No.
It's in the Code of Ordinances.
So if we can just get a timeline on when, when we can get that in place? Because the only carrot isn't, isn't available.
Well, anyway. We found it in the Code of Ordinances in some way, shape, or form, so.
I don't know if Main Street or Olive or someone would have this, but do we know where the train stops were on the Sun Belt or on the Sugar Belt Railway? I know the one downtown, but there were a couple others. I didn't know if we knew. Are there any of those structures still there, or is that, they're all gone? Okay. Okay.
Please come to the microphone, please.
The ending location was, Paula Stark, Executive Director of St. Cloud Main Street. It was at Narcousie Road, like right in front of where Turtle Creek is now. There's a turnabout there where it ended, and they actually physically had to turn the trains around to go that way. I'm sure there is documentation of the actual stops along the way. Obviously, the VFW was the train depot, and then it went to Kissimmee from there. I can't off the top of my head tell you what those locations are.
Yeah, there were like four or five stops in between those two, so I just didn't know if there was anything. It could be, look like a random house now, but it's, it wasn't one of those stops. I did a bunch of research a while back on the Sears catalog kit homes. I didn't realize you could buy a house from the Sears catalog. These are all Sears catalogs?
Most of them, yes.
Okay, interesting. I think I have a couple of, a couple of them, reprints of them. Do we have any protections on the Distin Sugar Mill? Are there any historic, is it registered or anything?
It is not registered. It needs to be registered, especially with the upcoming things that are going on. Councilwoman Matheny probably knows some things from the county side because the anticipation is the bike trail will come through there. There have been some conversations held with us in reference to, you know, how that looks and those kinds of things. But I think if nothing else, that needs to go on the register, it needs a state marker there. And it needs a little bit of TLC, so some cleanup and stuff like that. But right now, it technically is governed by South Florida Water Management, but it is also owned privately. So there has to be some things that are like coordinated in order to make all of that happen. But it needs, what's remaining there needs to be addressed and needs to be made probably a stop for the, the bike trail. It would be one of those very unique items that would be held.
Perfect.
I can chime in on that if you want.
One more question or comment, I guess. Olive's group has a great house tour that we did pre-COVID. I don't know if any of these, if you had the map of any of those tiny houses that we could maybe add a different clue or something with that?
I was told that a citizen had compiled something. We didn't get to see it, but, but we understand that somebody's doing that, yeah.
And then if we, yeah, it'd be great if we could have pictures because I know a lot of people are buying those, those little houses, fixing them up and expanding them and changing them in, in ways that aren't in character, in keeping with the character of the original house.
And like I said, it's so easy with the internet now that you can go find the old catalogs and see what, you know, were the popular styles and to make some decisions based on what the original materials and designs were from the catalogs.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you haven't taken Olive's tour, I've taken it a few times. It's really, really good, if, if you haven't had an opportunity.
Please come to the mic.
And a lot of the houses she was showing, I've seen on the tour.
Just take your name, please.
Olive Mourning, curator for the Heritage Museum and a president of the St. Cloud Women's Club. And in January, for several years, we've been able to have this house tour. And we toured 30 houses, and it's a bus tour, so it's really good for senior citizens. They don't have to walk from place to place. And then we have usually five houses that are open after the tour's over with. People can go back on their own and go inside these houses. But we, every year, we look, we resurvey those houses again to decide if we want to keep them on the tour or take some off for one reason or another and add new ones on. And so we can certainly look at the, at the Sears houses and see what we can do with that. Some of them are already on there, but there are some others that we could probably put on, too. And we like to show the Spano Flora houses over on Carolina because those are very unusual. So thank you for all of you who have ever attended our house tours. We hope in 2022 we'll be able to do it again, January next year. We'll see.
Excellent. Thank you, Olive. Ms. Matheny?
Yeah. So the trail plan on the C-31 Canal with the Sugar Mill that's there, I'm sure the, if, if we wanted to gather the information, the Osceola County Historic Society has a lot of that data. But I actually called the state of Florida about the C-31 Canal like four or five years ago. And it's, what they told me is the canal is on the Historic Register, which I didn't realize a canal could be, because they said Hamilton Distin dug it. And so in her presentation, she had item number B, if it was built by someone of significance, so the actual canal is.
That's what we call a linear resource.
Yeah, and so then I know that there was concern about the Sugar Mill because just people are taking things from it. Like everybody, I don't know why, they go and like take a brick or do whatever. And so there is a need to protect it when the trail comes down and all those people come down.
I have another consultant who contacted me, I can't remember if I put her in touch with you, but she was recording it through the cultural resource process. So there should be updated information available at the Florida Master Site File if somebody wanted to call and get that report.
Whoever was the, the project that, management that the county hired in Orlando, they are in contact, and they are trying to gather information about all of that. So hopefully it all kind of comes together.
Don't leave.
Okay.
So back 20 years ago, I remember the city had a program where you could get like metal placards for your homes, and it would say like 1920, and it would say who the original house was. Like, was that a Main Street program?
Main Street has been talking about putting that back in place since we helped put the ordinance together to go in front of city council. But actually, that is one of the items listed under the Historic Preservation Board but has not gotten to the implementation part. So one or the other is going to take that up.
Okay.
But we get calls about it all the time.
Yeah, I loved it. It was kind of, you know, charming when you'd walk up to a house and it would have the little metal placard and tell you like who the original owner was.
Originally was coming out of the Historic Preservation Board that was previous in place through the city. But that ordinance was rescinded several years ago, and that's why we picked it back up and asked for it to be reinstated.
Okay, thank you. My last item, so I guess this is as good a time as I need to bring it up, but I wanted to ask the council, we haven't had our full council in a couple meetings, about re-discussing the power plant. You know, was there any desire from other council members to talk about it? I've had some conversations, and I hadn't realized until a month and a half ago that it was on the 11 to save through the Florida Trust. So, and it's, you know, she's got it in her report here. So it was something I wanted to bring up to council, and I mean, I guess just think about it. If we would want to kind of talk about saving the building again. I know we decided at the time, so the plan right now is the building's coming down. So I, I just feel like maybe we need to think about it again and talk about it again. And I just don't know how the other two council members are feeling about that.
I think that would certainly need to come up at a council meeting when you have a full complement of council members here.
And, you know, I think quarterly, we're supposed to get updates from OUC on kind of how the process is going. And I was hoping one of those updates would be they can, they figured out where the plume was, and we might be able to, to reassess some of that as well.
Okay. Well, I just, if you were inclined to re-discuss it, that's all I was just asking.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. I recall at a meeting, we were over at the community center, that I had got direction, if we can save the building, we would bring that back to the council. And so when we start those quarterly reports, as Mr. Trace said, we will be bringing that forward and have to identify where those environmentally sensitive areas are. But yeah, I think we already had direction.
Okay.
I was pretty clear on that, so.
Well, that's good. I just know like the last item that came to us didn't have anything about saving the building in it.
I'm starting to fall in love with the building, so.
Just get that appendage thing off the front.
Yeah, just take it back to like the historic look of it, but I, you know.
And we have shared it with OUC also.
Okay.
And we've told them that, so.
And I could just say, when I first came here to initially work on this survey and I was driving the boundaries, that building struck, that immediately popped out to me, like, that's, that's important. That has significance. That's individually eligible.
If they just were a little better with their, you know, dumping things back in the day.
And I live in Tallahassee, and I, I, we had what was a big, huge brown field that is now Cascades Park, if any of you have been there. It is beautiful. It is a crowning asset, but it was, it was literally the city dump. I documented the incinerator before they tore it down, but the old electric building is now a restaurant and a bar and a venue. And they cleaned it all up, and, you know, it's gorgeous, and it's an asset, so there's hope.
And then, I mean, we've had this group out here for an hour and a half. I didn't know if any of them had any questions or, or comments as well.
That was my next issue. Does anyone in the audience have something you would like to ask? Please come to the microphone. You have to come to the microphone, please, because it's been recorded.
So, is, my name's Dan Hartley, and I'm on the Board of Appeals. I was just curious, is OUC leasing the building from the city? Is that lease still in effect, or how does that power plant building?
Mr. Sturgeon, would you speak to that?
No, actually, what happened is we've entered into an interlocual agreement for OUC to take the leadership role and the technical assistance to get it cleaned up. And they proffered about $6 million to us. They're going to take care of as much as they can with that. And, and just as that process unfolds, if we leave the building in place, it becomes more expensive. So we have to be cautious of the cost, and like I said, we're going to come back and look at it.
And I know at one time, they were actually using our generators, and they supplied power to the city.
At one time?
And, but I didn't know how, what the status of that was at this point in time.
It's been gutted inside.
Yeah, I've been in it 100 times. I, I dealt with OUC. They provided a lot of equipment when they were revamping the building. And so I, I understand the problems, but I was just curious of the ownership and what the status of the?
We own it. They're, they're doing the technical cleanup.
Can't beat that.
No, sir.
Would anyone else like to speak, especially from the Historic Board?
I know in previous discussions, you all alluded to the outside boundaries of the district, the current district. So I just wanted to give you a little background of that. As we, and as I say, we, the subcommittee that was created from Main Street to address bringing in ordinance forward, we worked, we had city staff on that committee with us, and we worked with the city manager at the time. And our recommendations for that boundary at the time was not as you see it now. But we did a compromise because what was told to us is if in fact we could do that boundary, and it was the central CRA district, that they could set aside separate funds underneath the CRA budget that would be allocated to the historic buildings in that area, and they'd be able to help incentivize some of those people, like the hardship cases that were mentioned, those kinds of things. I'm not really sure at this point that any of that has been utilized for whatever reasons. But that said, my point is, we do have to be concerned with those other structures that are outside of our boundary. And at that time, we wanted to do, we had lined up a boundary that was more in the definite grid area. It was a little bit bigger than what we currently. It was a little bit bigger than what we currently have, but also to do an overlay that would include all of those historic buildings that had been identified in the 1993 building inventory. That way, those buildings would be protected as well and could fall underneath any of the items that we would be allocating for the current district as well. So I think that's an area that we probably should go back and address just to make sure that we protect additional things, including things like Peghorn Park and the buildings that are over there. So there's a lot of inventory outside of our boundary currently.
Anyone else? Could you please give us your name, please?
Yes, Tony Jones from the Historic Preservation Board. Mayor Blackwell and fellow council members. Thank you for inviting us today to this work session. I not only learned a lot from the presentation about the historic preservation issues, but it was great to hear the different departments come forward with their presentations about the status of those and to get a good idea of how my city is working. Thank you again for the invitation.
And thank you for your volunteer service. And we need to give credit to our city manager and our staff who were part of that.
Yes, Mr. Sturgeon.
Genius to give us a report and update and include you guys.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Sturgeon, and all the other board members.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank all the board members that attended today. I think it was a great session. And if I could, Mayor, ask Mr. Anderson to come up and talk about the next steps. How do we implement? We've heard this presentation twice. We've got our board members here. But what do we need to do to codify it? Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain the next steps. So you've heard this presentation twice now. And we also had a presentation to the Historic Preservation Board. They accepted the survey and the recommendations. And now the next step is to move it forward to the city council for a meeting to accept this document as well as recommendations or make modified recommendations based on your discussions. So we'll be bringing this forward to you, and not next meeting, probably the following meeting, to get your input on the recommendations in this survey. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Sturgeon?
No, Mayor.
I don't have any other items on our agenda. I'd like to thank all of you for your volunteer effort and work. Appreciate your involvement in our city. Thank you for your service, and thank you for being here today. Have a wonderful day. Thank you. Renowned.